At this time, I will call the January 24th Public County Board of Commissioners Work Session to order and thank you all for being here. Sometimes elected officials just don't stand out, but I don't see city council members or judges correct if I'm wrong. We're glad to have all of you all here and again, thanks for your participation. Brian, you can bring forward the list of citizens who speak. Have a phone on everything, it's a good time to turn that off. And we're thrilled to have Pastor Gene Morehouse from Westside Christian Church bring us our indication and lead us into place. State it, Brian.
Going to start off with scripture in that prayer. This is from Habakkuk, the third chapter. It says, "Lord, I have remembered your fame and I am afraid of the deeds that you might do, if wicked and individuals. I pray for each and every one of you that you use common sense and follow good values and love the Lord." Let's bow for prayer, please. Heavenly Father, this is my first time with this new group and I ask, Lord, that you watch over them, help them, guide them, protect them, and help those who have voted and been a part of this community, that we may be of support and love to one another, that we may continue to see this county grow, see this county prosper, and see this county be a place where families feel safe and their children can be raised with values and morals that would be pleasing to you. We love you, Lord, and we thank you for your love and compassion to us. Be with each and every leader, whether it be from the fire department, to the police, to the local security guards, to those who take care of those in the nursing home and assist at liver. We ask, Lord, that you watch over those who have a responsibility of doing what's right and helping others. In the name of your Son and our Savior Jesus, all God's people say it.
Amen.
Let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Morehouse, that was wonderful, appreciate it. Under minutes, the January 8th, 2019 Work Session Minutes and the January 8th, 2019 Board Meeting Minutes are available for review.
Dave, I got a couple of changes that I need to ask that we put in minutes. Do you like that as a motion now?
Why don't we go through the...it doesn't have to do with announcements or bid awards?
No, it's just an update, just a correction in the minutes, but we can do it later if you'd like.
Okay, we'll call that here after the bid awards.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
We have real exciting, positively rewarding this morning that Jeff Hawkins and Austin Hager have done a wonderful job also. February is Black History Month and so we're ahead of the game. This will be on Channel 23, all three February, but we wanted to get preview today.
In honor of Black History Month, I'm excited to introduce several black leaders who have inspired our generation and making a difference in our community.
Black history is important because as an African-American man, not just a pastor, knowing who I am, knowing that we were kings, knowing that black people invented things, that black people created things, black people have been a cause to make America great.
History is going to help us learn and we'll keep on...
Blacks have played an integral part of civil rights, civil justice. Blacks have fought in every war and every skirmish this country has ever had. And I think you cannot talk about history of the United States, history of even the western world without bringing up black history and the contributions of blacks to the American experience.
The fact that we set aside this law makes you put a concentrated effort on giving tribute to those African-Americans who've made a contribution to our society.
Black history is important because it's part of who we all are, just like Native American history, European history, because the United States as we know is immense. The Statue of Liberty, Buckle, all in the founding of the empire. And we have to make sure that when people come, not just to the United States, but to all the counties, Hyattville, Dallas, that they feel welcome and become a part of the community, that we all can work together to improve it and our community.
I went to a student board meeting that was talking about getting books. The bus for black history, we had no way, getting a school to walk. Everybody in the student board members said, "Why should we buy buses? And folks, they're going to be palm hands anyway." That thought still burns in my heart. That's why you and I are still a student. I encourage people to study the black history without studying our history, having the goal to build better, to leave some behind, that I knew for nothing, that black people of color contribute greatly to the great United States of America. That's why I supported them.
Good job Angel out here. Cliff McGrady from Harrah is here with us in the back and Reverend Labour is was here also. There he is, sitting behind those tall ladies. Thanks for being here.
Excuse us, I'm heading to South Georgia, got 42 preachers waiting for me to teach them tonight.
Let me say, Representative Kim Alexander from deep in the building, trying to add a little bit more of that clip. I'd like to ask for DOT, Harley DOT Director George Jones, to go to podiums, everybody can see you, and just to make a announcement about the county hall tonight, please.
Morning. I'd like to announce that tonight, from 5:00 to 7:00, there's going to be a public information open house regarding Cedar Crest Road lining project at the Sheldon Elementary School cafeteria located at 1530 Cedar Crest Road. The project itself is for widening about 2.7 miles of Cedar Crest Road, primary road to Church Road to the Cobb County line. Basically, the project was programmed based on the need for an improved roadway to reduce congestion down in the future and improve the safety of roadway. The public information open house will be used to inform the public that a project is proposed in the area and to gather information and receive comments from folks who are interested in it. And basically, the D O H will ask the local officials, residents, civic groups, neighborhood groups, businesses, to ask questions and comments on the project. We would definitely want anybody who is interested in this project to be there in from 5:00 to 7:00. There's going to be no formal presentation, but we're going to have display boards of the project itself and we'll have folks who'll be able to answer any questions about the project at this meeting. Like I said, we're definitely wanting people to understand what's going on up there and looking forward to being up there and answering questions.
Special. I thought I'd received the last Christmas present, but you never know what's going to happen on the panel up here and sent out and had this toy and you can kind of shake your hand, the last thing that said to me was, "Nice try." I'll keep working on it, Brian. At this time, oh, we have no invited guests and Ron, why don't you go and make your changes at this time?
Okay, thanks Dave. The first change to the minutes that I saw that was needed is about, it's on the, for the work session, third of the way down on the second page. There's a, let me find it, excuse me. There's a paragraph says, "Commissioner Davis expresses belief that the board would need to do something about their current county attorney." They stated they had a county attorney until they fired her, or she resigned, asked if and when she resigned. Then the next paragraph says, "Chairman Carmichael stated that Miss Skipper was appointed," and goes on to talk about an interim attorney. I'd like to suggest that we change that to reflect what happened in the meeting. So the paragraph that starts, "Chairman Carmichael," would be changed to say, "Chairman Carmichael stated that Miss Skipper had resigned during the week and then stated that Miss Skipper was appointed as county attorney and it continued ahead." That's the first change that I saw. This needed, and then the second change was in the regular Board Meeting Minutes, that's also on the second page. Probably about halfway down the line is, it was New Business Act, under New Business Action 1, where we appointed the new county attorney. The last line there says, "Chairman Carmichael asked Jason Phillips to join the board up front." That actually happened after the designation of Commissioner Stover as Chairman Pro Tem, so that one line needs to move after New Business Item Number 2. Those were the two things I saw in the minutes.
I had seen the change that you mentioned about when I asked Attorney Phillips to come and just describe what the law says about interim, but the first one, I still don't understand what you're saying.
What had happened was that I asked you if Lonnie had resigned and you told me that she did, and I asked when, and you said during the week, and then you went on to explain about the interim being appointed until someone else has been appointed. So I wanted the record, the minutes to show what actually happened there in the meeting.
Okay, I think it was a misunderstanding. I didn't say that she resigned, I said we had talked about...
You said she resigned, I said, "Did she resign?" And you said, "Yes." I said, "When?" And you said, "During the week."
Oh, that is incorrect. She had resigned.
Okay, well, we can, we... She had resigned during the week?
No, she did not, she never did resign. It was, I spoke of resignation with her, but she did resign.
Okay, but I guess that, I understand that, but what happened in the meeting is what I'm trying to get to show in the minutes. And what happened in the meeting is that you told me that she had resigned.
Well, then, I was correcting that statement today because what I meant to convey and indicate at the last meeting was that we had spoke about resignation and we came up with the conclusion, not just in talking with her, but in talking to the county administrator and talking to Mr. Phillips, that just like Mr. Phillips said when he came up to the podium, that there's no requirement for an interim to resign.
Right, I understand that, yeah, but that's not, actually not what I'm, wasn't here to get into that, but my concern here is that the minutes that we approved reflects what actually happened in the meeting. And what actually happened in the meeting was, was what is required. And so that's why I've asked the board to change those meetings, the minutes are correct.
I would say that if you go back and watch the video, and that's what we said, that we placed that in the minutes and then reflected in the minutes today, that I corrected the fact that she did have resigned.
Mr. Chairman, briefly. So what Commissioner Davis is requesting is that, we got really two issues. One of those issues is what happened at the meeting based on what events took place. And Commissioner Davis is indicating that, based on his recollection, he understood you at that, at the work session to have stated that Miss Skipper had resigned. And what you're asking to have happened is that the minutes of the work session accurately reflect what was stated.
That's correct.
That is a, that is a different issue as to what you understood to be the case. The minutes simply record what happened at the meeting as opposed to whether or not now Chairman Carmichael had a misunderstanding of what affects work. These are simply the minutes.
That's correct.
So we'll make that correction in the minutes and then what's minutes are correct.
Did you get both of those correct?
Yes.
All right, under bid awards, number one is to award the purchase of a Bobcat E55 compact excavator to Bobcat Atlanta in the amount of $59,747, as Pollard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As we are adding our soil water vision functions back into operations, this will allow them to, I haven't really allowed, this will allow them to dig trenches, install pipes, and clear and grow, clear and grow detention lines. DOT worked with Fleet Maintenance to determine the type of equipment that they needed and Bobcat Excavator was determined to be the most efficient piece of equipment they could use. And it also includes an option for an arm, which some of the other equipment did not include. So that led us to a little bit of a problem getting more than one quote. So we reached out to Bobcat, they provided us with a quote for this piece of equipment and to check that, we reached out to Sourcewell. Sourcewell is a co-op purchasing agreement where it's been, is a national purchasing contract where this piece of equipment's been bid before and we're actually purchasing this piece of equipment at a lower cost than that co-op contract. So that makes Fleet and DOT comfortable in price.
Any questions for Ms. Pollard? Number two is to award Quail Ridge Road culvert replacement project to the low bid of Baldwin paving in the amount of $397,770.31.
This particular project, we had two bidders participate and it will consist of replacing two drainage structures with aluminum arch culverts and also including grade, grade base and paving on the section of Quail Ridge Road. So we're recommending a work for the lowest bidder in the amount of $397,770.
Dave, on this one, two things that I'd like to mention. First, staff has been working very diligently on this. That, that road is a post-lawn road and Dave, I'm sure you've been down it.
Oh, yeah.
It is in bad shape. It has been in bad shape for the better part of the decade. So I wanted to say thank you to the staff, Scott, George, and a lot of other people who's been working on it. We had a, actually had a neighborhood meeting out there a while back and now maybe almost a year.
Last April.
In April, okay. So we, we had a meeting about that, so I heard from them last night when they saw this on the, on the agenda, they were very excited about that and they wanted me to pass on their appreciation of the staff that's worked diligently on this. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we had an issue in post-four, I think it was Gullis Road, that involved all the paving. And I've spoken to George about this, I just want to make sure that we're not going to see the same issues on this project that we saw on the other one. And so George, would you comment about what we're doing to make sure that that's not an issue with these folks?
Ron, I think this is a little different animal, it's a drainage project versus a paving project. We've had a long relationship with Baldwin Paving, had generally very good results. The resurfacing project, last thorough resurfacing project did not go as well as we'd like. There was delays, they had liquidated the engines, etc. We changed our thorough paving to start earlier in the year and we've also dealt with liquidated engines, so that won't happen again. If it does happen, it will be monetarily disadvantageous for them to do something like that. We basically, this was bulletproof in my opinion. But getting back to the, our culvert's involvement, I believe they have the personnel, the resources, the experience to do this project and the timeline that we have, six months of I, we're going to watch them, we're going to make sure that this project goes smoothly. Obviously, there's only one way to get in and out. Residents are extremely impacted by this project, but we will make sure that this project is done in acceptable time.
And you mentioned timeline, what do we anticipate for them getting started and finishing?
Well, when we issue the NTP, we'll talk to Pollard at least a month later or so.
Okay.
When we issue the NTP, it's six months from, about six months from when they actually start work, six months from the end.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks much. Got some big reports from committees and departments this morning. First begin with Peter Holden, our election supervisor, and he's going to give us an update on press release. My thanks for going on the electoral board, right?
Good morning, thank you for giving me just a few minutes. In the December meeting for the Board of Elections, they unanimously voted to put together an election support committee. And this committee would basically be people from our community that would serve and that they would be kind of our base on the ground and out there looking for potential polling locations, early voting locations, poll workers, things that we can't say because we're most of the time in the office working on things that we have to do here. If I will, if I can, I would like to tell you how we would like this committee to be made of because it does involve a post-commissioner. But the committee would be made up of one Democratic representative that would be appointed by the Democratic Party, a Republican representative that would be appointed by the Republican Party, one post-commissioner, and then there would be two citizens from each post-district. And they would be appointed by the Board of Elections, by an application process. This is a non-hate commission, they'll just, not commission, committee, and they will meet quarterly just to kind of sit down and offer up ways that we can better serve the voters of our county, to make suggestions, to tell us what's working in their community and what's not working in their community. So we're looking forward to doing this. The terms would be 24-month terms with the exception of the post-commissioner and that post-commissioner would be a 12-month term. So basically, we want to have this organized by March the 1st and we are on track to do that. So we just want to just kind of, you know, take the blinders off and listen to the people because that's who we serve and we feel that by putting this committee together, that the committee can offer suggestions for us to help us in the election world. And I also want to take the opportunity to invite each of you, you all have received invitation, but everyone in the audience as well as the people who are listening, we have a vendor downstairs, we're having a regional election meeting right now downstairs in the cafeteria, and there is a vendor there that has a voting system that would be very similar to what we have recommended, recommended to the General Assembly for our next voting system for Georgia. Many of you know that I served on the Safe Commission and this is something that we want to ask for. It is a ballot marking device, but it's also verifiable. So if someone wants to come back and audit us, they can do so and see exactly that our votes match up to what has been tallied. So if you have a few minutes, they'll be down there till about 2:00. Please come down, put your hands on the machines, ask questions, and just see what it's all about because we're very excited about this. Do y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Next report is from our Finance Director, Ms. Tabitha Pollard, who as routinely, when we get halfway through the fiscal year, which is January, Ms. Pollard will kind of break us up today, whether we're ahead, behind, or any other information that's worth providing.
Sorry for that delay, but hopefully you can, everybody in the audience can read the screen now. I have copies of a mid-year report that are in the back. Hopefully I had enough, I hit "now put me on the website." First, I want to talk about the general fund and the revenues and where we are, and then we'll talk about the expenditures. If you'll recall, last year when we were going through the budget process, we increased several of our revenues and this will give you an idea as to how we are, how those revenues are actually coming in. So in our first line, of course each column has its budget, your final budget, December of this year and December of the prior year, and then your percent used is your current year amount. So for property taxes, we've collected approximately 96% of those. At this time last year, we've collected approximately 92%. So they're very similar. Other taxes, we have collected 20 million as opposed to last year was 18 million. We did have some of that increased budgeted, so that percent collected for this year is 61, it's exactly the same as it was last year based on prior year budget. Overall, I will tell you this, that investment income does have some, there is some investment income that's not captured on there, so that is definitely higher than 68, we'll see the 74 that was in the prior year. Overall, we have revenues collected at 77% this year. That's exactly the same as it was this time last year, so it was at 77%. We do have increased, there is 4 million dollars more than it was collected at this time last year, but a lot of that was budgeted and planned for going into the year. I want to give you some specifics. So for, specifically for the title of law and tax, you can see the green bar is a good bit higher than the previous, than the other years, that is 2019. That increase began, if you look at March of last year, we began to see an increase in title of law and tax revenue. That increase has continued and for the remainder of the year, I have estimated exactly what we collected last year. So with not a lot of growth because that growth occurred in March, so hesitant to add growth beyond what we already see. The local option sales tax, we budgeted an increase there as well. We have exceeded those revenues in the first six months of this year, well, first five months. December was collected a little bit. And for the remains, remainder of the year, we have, I've estimated the same as last year with hopes that we'll have a little bit of growth for some additional funds. So that's a good, that's good information to have as we get ready to go into the budget process in the next few months. Below the revenues, you have the expenditures. Basically, all departments are listed by department, the budgets approved at the departmental level, so each department has the ability to move funds around within that department. I'm going to skip down and go all the way to the bottom, or to the page, see, I'll go up a bit here, to the end of the general plan. To the total expenditures, so right here, you have your total expenditures and this year, we are at 29.4 million and last year we were 29.4 million. 39% expenditures have occurred already this year and last year we were at 40.1%. So we're on track. With revenues and expenditures, hopefully we'll have a little bit of growth in the revenues. At the bottom of this, I'd like to kind of give you an idea of the difference between this number and this number because it's talking about a use of fund balance. So in the budget that we approved in August, we had budgeted for a use of fund balance of $1.8 million. June 30th, when we closed the year, we take the encumbrances that have already been obligated for you and roll them into 2019. So that increases the amount of expenditures that we have budgeted by almost $1.5 million. And if you look back to the capital, it's online for the fiscal year 2018 year. We added two fund balances this year in the amount of $1.5 million. It's primarily the amount that we added to fund balance, the amount that had already been obligated because those funds had not been spent. They've been encumbered, they were obligated, but they were not. The expense had not actually occurred until the fiscal year 2019. So we are pretty much on track for what we have planned with a little bit of revenue. But we'll see how it goes and works out this year to hopefully put those revenues. Do we got any questions?
The only question I have is, are we planning for one of those wonderful professional workshops that you figured out how to run?
We are going to try to do one of those workshops. We are, I need dates from, suggested dates from each of you. So if y'all can give me possibly two dates. Meet in April? Or like March?
Just for the public, that will be advertised because we all have a forum here discussing county business. But in that meeting, we get several tables set up in this room, and we divide and conquer, and each table works through a budget. And it is a very eye-opening process. You know, I'm a part of the budget process for the county. That budget workshop that we do is a wonderful thing. Tabitha's done a great job brainstorming that one and making it a reality. It helps the board with the budget process, and it helps Tabitha with the budget process. Anyone who sits in on it will have a new appreciation for how that budget comes together. And so I would encourage you all, as you see that advertised, to plan to spend maybe a day, maybe a half a day up here and enjoy it with us. It's worth it.
Just to underscore Commissioner Davis, that is public invited. So we, first year, we had a full table last year. We just had one interview. What happened there is, and I have the experience. Tabitha, I just want to just clarify on my own budget understanding. The obligated expenses, you said were $1.5 million?
Yes, sir. So June 30th of last year, we had talked about pretty extensively as to how we're going to end the year. And it didn't look like we were going to add to or take away from the balance. Because that information was based on what had been obligated. So June 30th, if the expense has not been incurred, because we're on a full basis, more information than we want. But if the expense has not been earned or accrued as of June 30th, then it doesn't mean the funds go away. If you've already made the obligation, have the work in progress, then you're going to have to pay for it. So what we'll do is close those encumbrances out for 2018 and open them back up in 2019. So what that does basically is creates a budget amendment that has to be, that will be approved by you at the end of the year. But those obligations were put in place by board action or by policy.
You told me there are no questions. Remember that?
Yeah, that's right. So we added two fund balances, but as you can see, we added two fund balances of $1.5 million. As you can see, we have the obligation going into 2019 for the exact same, roughly the $1.5 million.
And now we're mostly seven months into 2019. In our local state for many years, it's variable, so I think that's why we should clarify this. But all those funds that were obligated now have been spent for exactly when they were obligated for by seven months in this one year. True?
Correct. Or we have, some of them were less because what they announced, they were thinking that choice can be lower.
You have any questions?
I will mention that there are, the bar is behind the general fund, then you have debt service, water sewer, and landfill. For the same time.
Well, your work is irreplaceable. Thank you. So let's continue to stay on top of these. We're going to have some tough decisions, and we need to be able to listen. And now we have Comprehensive Program Services in the building, and it's great to have Mr. Eric Johnson, the President, to come bring us up to date on the detention center. You love running, right?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman, fellow Commissioners, Mr. Baker. Thank you for having us here. Again, my name for those new faces, my name's Eric Johnson with Comprehensive Program Services. We're the program managers over at the Paulding County Adult and Tenure Law Enforcement Center. We're heading along into construction, and we get an update in November, and we're coming for a monthly update this month. I would recognize Tim Collins and Lance Painter with Turner are here. Thank you guys for showing up for the support. So with that, let's go ahead and get started here. Again, whatever pertinent information we need, keep it public and informed. We load it up on pauldingjo.com. Kind of catchy. So that seems to be working out really well. Budget, this is very similar to the budget, is similar. It is the same budget that we presented back in November. The overall project budget is $70,200,000, which has been revised a couple of times, those line items that we've described and explained previously in other commission meetings. But those line items are the same. Down below, you'll see the line item. Within Turner's Guaranteed Maximal Price, they have a construction agency which they are able to use to fill gaps in their buyout. We manage that with them. So you'll see originally it was $1,310,050, and currently it's $779,268,700. So we've gone over a couple of the cost impacts that we've had previously. When we presented back in November, there were three issues that we brought up. Precast panel changes, which was based on all of our reviews with the city of Dallas and the district that the jail is in. We had to make some modifications to the exterior. Basically, it puts some reveals, brick pattern, and the precast panels, which were done locally. For each Commissioner, here at Hentremont, we've been a very big team player, done an excellent job. The second one was performance documents, which was basically taking documents that the GMP were produced at 75% get to 100%, and just basically that's what it came out to be, which included a good bit of site work, made some changes out there. So a third item in there, which was not approved, but we did ask for funding, but we didn't have a funding source, was the rock. Okay? So I want to, not to get too far in the weeds or in the rock too much. We did change order one, approved officially the precast panel changes and the performance documents, which were included into Turner's Guaranteed Maximal Price. Currently, their GMP is $61,023,120. And if you go back to here, you'll see what we did when we moved some numbers around. The actual construction manager of risk budget item we're carrying is $61,250,000. So between what's in their GMP now and what was budgeted, there's a delta to the plus of around $226,688. The reason I say that is the one issue that we were dealing with was rock. We gave you an estimate. We did a lot of scientific stuff, came up with an estimate of 11,000 yards. Good thing is, there was roughly 6,035 cubic yards of rock. There was some associated site work dealing with how to dispose of it and everything else. But the number that we had brought to you early on was 595,263, which was our estimate that we presented back in November, if you remember that. That number right now, Turner has provided a change order request. Within that, there's some other issues that were still under review. But within that change order request, the rock actually came in around $450,000. So that's good news. It actually is less than we thought it was going to be, which is good. So with that, as you see in there, change order number 14, which is under review. And when I say under review, it is, I mean, we're doing surveys, we have third-party testing. I mean, we're measuring every yard that's on here that gets moved, which is a different rate than if it gets sent over to the training center. You'll see a lot of trucks that are rolling around. We're doing everything we can. Scott Green and Bruce Coyle have been instrumental with that, and Sheriff's Office, obviously, in being able to deal with all the issues bothering around the rock. So two other issues that we're dealing with, high-speed backhoe doors for the Sheriff's Office operations. And one other issue that we have brought up before is the burn pit that is left over from the construction of these buildings, which is exactly where we'll put the visitations at. So we're mitigating that issue, and we're saying the range of dealing with it is going to be $50,000 to $100,000. Not to get too far in weeds on that one either. We're going down three feet, about eight feet deep, done some investigation on it. Going down three feet, trying to put some sort of structural barrier and then kind of build up from there so we don't have to dig out eight feet of stuff and take it somewhere else. So if it goes well, it's going to be closer to 50. If we have to continue to dig deeper than three feet, it will get closer to 100. But we're monitoring that again on a daily basis with our third-party testing. So I can stop right there if you have any questions on any of these numbers. I know it's a lot to absorb, especially for pretty new commissioners. And we've got all the backup and everything else. As I said, Scott's been very involved, so has Bruce Coyle.
What's your plan on the three-foot material that you're going to be digging out?
We'll dispose of that wherever it makes the most sense or economical standpoint. So it will leave the site for sure. I can rebury it for sure, but we will, it'll get doubled in the schedule than what's right. I don't have an exact answer for where we're going to take it, and it actually depends on where you go. Right now, it's just stumps. It's not construction debris like sheet rock. It's mostly just organics.
Yeah, I went up there and looked at Scott probably six months ago, first time. Most of the time, you have molotov soil, which you're going to have. If it was a screamy material, was that molotov soil needed for that material job site?
We did have a lot. You'll see that big pile of dirt over there, that is topsoil. And we have gotten rid of some of the topsoil, taken it to the training center. But what you see over that big pile is topsoil. Yes, sir. So progress. As you know, it's raining a lot, so the progress has still been going well, although it's challenging at times. Steel erection at the LEC is in progress. You can see that going on. SEME block work is in progress. And again, all this is getting not only the project teams reviewed, but also third-party testing, which is Nova Engineering. Precast, 100% complete is support, 95 at the housing. Roof insulation is beginning, and you know, what happens is it's double Ts, a lot of that structure. So when it rains, it takes a while for, you got to get the moisture out of that. You can't put a barrier over that, especially a roof, seal all that water in. So anyway, that's one challenge on the roof. And steel cells are expected to begin delivering by the end of January. And that, that will be, if you're able to watch, if you want something to see, that's actually really, really interesting. And you want to see a really good example of lean construction, how that works, precast, you know, sliding those cells. Pretty amazing. So again, here's some pictures, steel erection, LEC, slabs for the support area. Underground rough ends at the housing, and there's a lot of stuff under those slabs, conduit and plumbing piping. Mechanical above in the support. So scheduled quicker path structure, elevated deck at Law Enforcement Center should be completed February 8. Precast panel structures, Law Enforcement, middle of February. Important slabs in Law Enforcement Center, February 19. Steel cell should be complete by March 8. They really, really, really pushed the job because they come in and track the trailers. They're coming. Actually, they're made up in Haversham County up in Tucupi. Here at Bill Matt Housing, medical support, January 15, 2020. Law Enforcement Center, summer of this year. We expect stage completion end of January of 2020, and final completion March 23, 2020. And that date has, Turner's done an excellent job with the team. And in November, the date was scheduled out to be April 28, 2020. So we've always felt like we could make up some time even with this rain, and we have. So that's all, it's all good news. And that's the elevation of what it's going to look like, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Contingency remaining?
Under contingency is $250,000.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Eric.
Thank you very much.
We have no citizens who have signed up for ten items. Under consent of ten items, we have one, which is to be reported, carry ten more to the Airport Authority Board with term ending summer 31, 2019.
Hey, I know I told you yesterday a lot of people are concerned about, I do have a little discussion on that, so could be, please move that to regular business. It came up in my group last night. I didn't get you to talk about that.
Okay. We'll move to the consent of ten items up to new business number two. Under all business, number one is discuss action to adopt Resolution 19, that's the only firm in the session from the 2:00 PM board meeting on January 8, 2019, with purpose of personnel, real estate, and pending potential litigation. Under new business, number one is discuss action to approve the contract services agreement for the Paulding County Kiosk Program for a period of two years in this gentleman's government board. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for letting me come talk to you about the kiosks. And I wanted to first bring up, I'll get started, maybe it'll come back up. We've had the kiosk program in place for approximately seven years. It was initiated in 2012 with a three-year contract and two extensions. The contract was amended twice to allow for four more years of extension. So the program's been in place for seven years. As of right now, we have 111 signed structures with 337 panels on them, and Ethel Graphics has collected over 33,000 pounds of litter on the size of the rideaway. We wanted to update the contract. Basically, we took out all the references to the beginning of the contract. We corrected some grammatical errors and typos. We've put in there to have this initial contract. I've been just calling it an updated contract for two years. Since this board will be in place for two years, and then we put in provisions for annual renewals. Mr. Morgan is here and can answer any questions that you may have. And we did put a provision in, you know what the existing kiosks look like. They have the county seal. So they have been kind enough to do one with our Explore, Unwind, Thrive logo, which I actually like this better and it gets a little more friendly and welcoming. So if the contract says that we have the choice of which one of our logos to use. So if the majority of the board likes this logo, any new kiosk, kiosks that are maintained will be changed to the new logo. And be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
So we, three of y'all are new, and so I don't know your involvement with this as this is the fourth year. This came about seven years ago. It's three years and was is the fourth year. This came about seven years ago. It was three years, and was it two, two-year extensions?
Well, it was three years with two annual renewals, and then it didn't make any provisions for any more renewals. So we amended the contract to allow for annual renewals, which happened twice.
And so last year, there was some frustration around signs. The right-of-way happened around election time, and there were some issues that came up there, and that's what brought me into it. I don't remember everybody, but I think it was just Ann, Dean, and me, and maybe Scott was in there. But we had talked about some things, and I appreciate the work on this. And one of the things that I would like to see, there were some things that were concerns there that I want to make sure, I don't know that aren't addressed as well as they could be in this contract. The first one on it is very simple. I'd like to ask the board if we need to change the two-year to a one-year, to leave the renewal verbiage in there so that the initial term is just one year instead of two. There was also, Etho Graphics had some, there was some frustration on their side as far as chain of communication, who they were supposed to deal with, with the county, as they were dealing with the sign pickup and documenting what they had picked up off the right-of-ways and handling the sign pickup. And I didn't see and hear, it's awful, I missed it, but I didn't see and hear where we were handling their chain of communications, who they further working regularly with, and how that's defined. And Jason, I don't know if that should be part of the contract, or we just need to set policy with them and direct them, or who they should be working with on a day-to-day basis. I'll let you offer maybe some of it on that in a minute. The other issue that was an issue that came up during election time is under a conflict of interest type of situation. We need to define in here what will happen if there is a conflict, whether the, whether Etho Graphics print signs for someone and then is supposed to complete them out of the right-of-way. Last year, we had to deploy marshals to do some sign pickup, and we need to make sure that we let our marshals do what our marshals need to do when the sign pickup happened by the folks who are supposed to pick up the signs. And so we need a conflict of interest verbiage added in there, and so I would ask that we instruct Jason to add that verbiage to cover for conflict of interest. And then the final thing that I have before I let Jason chime in on some of this is, is that logo change. We're talking about changing that logo on all of the existing, or just new? All of the existing, okay. Is that at our expense? So about the one-year versus two, the chain of communication and conflict of interest. Jason, would you have any insight on any of those concerns?
Sure. Just taking those in order, one-year versus two, that's within the board's discretion as to what y'all want to have in there. If y'all decide that in there, we'll make sure it's in there. Of course, you know, Etho Graphics is the other contracting party. You know, presumably, if y'all decide that it's going to be one-year renewable, and they're agreeable to that, then it'll be a contract. On the second question regarding contact points, I think you raised a good point there. For me personally, I believe that should really be a policy issue. There may come, we can certainly put it in the contract, the policy points will be, or the contact points will be.
That was in there. Who noticed? Should go to, it's myself, on behalf of the county, and Dean Morgan on behalf of Etho Graphics. And discussing this, we talked about like in the past, and I've spoken briefly to Chief Hess, just to have, because right now, if he wants a new kiosk, he sends the information to me, and I coordinate with DOT, and I'm going to continue doing that. And I've also, with Chief Hess, as far as if he locates something that appears to be in the right-of-way, also send that to me and have one of our planning and zoning staff, and then we would coordinate with the Marshal Bureau if we did find it in the right-of-way.
I'm new with all that. I just wanted to step forward. So that was my oversight. I apologize.
Now, the conflict of interest, if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're referring to a situation where there may be signs within the right-of-way, those signs may have been manufactured by Etho Graphics, or may not have?
Well, it could be. I mean, that's the one that comes to mind, but it could be, maybe his brother running for office, or his buying houses for cash, or something like that, where there's a conflict there. We need, we have some versions that says what's going to happen if he's in that kind of situation.
Sure. I can see that happening. You know, at the end of the day, if we have prohibition against signs on the right-of-way, there shouldn't be any sign on the right-of-way, regardless of content, regardless of manufacturing. I'll be glad to put some language in if it addresses that.
I would appreciate that. I don't know if any of the rest of you guys would like to comment on any of those, or if you have any input on your end.
I would like to thank Ann and Dean. I got involved in this just a little bit and figured some of this stuff out, but they did a great job in revising that contract. And I think that two-year is, I think it's more fair for them to allow this man's new business because he's doing a really good service for the county. This is kind of a solution. Like years ago, we paid people and had signage departments and stuff like that, and some of those responsibilities fell on this. This man is actually handing us a check to the board. And we're handing him a little bit of money back, a little small percentage. And I don't want to throw those numbers out, but I think it's probably in the 20% to 30% range. But we're retaining almost everything he's handing us back. These are the kind of creative solutions in government that we want to see, and these are the kind of relationships we want to build. And as for the conflict, when they did have a change, I think in departments, I think that there was some confusion, maybe on the onset, on who people were.
There was some confusion.
But it's been resolved.
Yeah.
That's all.
So are we good with Jason adding language about the conflict? I saw some heads nod about the one-year versus two, so I don't know where the board wants to go on that, but are we good with language about conflict of interest?
Yeah, I would consider that developing two years. You know, being a business owner, having to redo something every year, it just, it really just makes things a little tougher because we don't have to.
The initial contract on this was three years to kind of give it time to get up and running. And then, so once it's up and running, I think we would better have the flexibility of making changes on an annual basis versus two years. I certainly see where it's coming from, and I don't disagree with you, but that was just.
It just makes it tougher on Dean to run his business against where they're at.
You don't, it sounds like you only leave that two years. So that's fine. But Jason, if you would, change or add some language about conflict.
Yes, sir.
That's all the concerns and questions I have for that day.
Thank you.
Would be good for the afternoon or evening meeting, if you have anything to say there? Are you taking this record or the table?
Depends how long y'all go.
I think I could probably get it in before the evening meeting.
I can look too and see if I can come up with something to help you out. And I was going to say, I do think we're actually going to see an increase in the kiosk because if you look at the permit data, the permits are expanding beyond the northeast corner. We have a lot of subdivisions in the south part of the county that haven't necessarily participated in the kiosk program. So I think with the growth beyond where our traditional building has been to the south part of the county, we may see even more kiosks in the next two years.
And I would like to ask one more question. Have you received any calls on any other staff, received any calls about competitive interest?
No.
Thank you very much for your report.
Thanks, Ann.
That is the conclusion of regular business.
Sorry, Nick. We have new business item number two.
We do. New business item number two is to reappoint Kerry Tenmore to the airport board with a term ending December 31, 2020.
I just had a question for you. Certainly appreciate any citizens willing to serve on these boards. Be strong, find people willing to be on the boards, and then it's a good service to the county. And I appreciate everyone who's willing to do that. My question around this appointee or this reappointment is with attendance of the meetings. Have you had opportunities to talk to him about if he's able to, he was at two meetings last year, and we need people who are able to make these meetings a priority. And I don't know what the schedule is like or whatever. And my concern is reappointing someone who's not able to be there on regular basis. I don't know if you had a chance to talk with him, or if you could provide me a phone number. I can give a phone call this afternoon if you want to do that.
That would probably be a better solution is for you and Mr. Ken Morgan to talk. He is a FedEx pilot out of Memphis, Tennessee. He's been on international routes until six months ago in down. He's on 48 contiguous routes.
Yeah, well, I was questioning qualifications.
No, well, the international puts you out of town a lot more than.
I understand. What you can give me is, I don't think I have his cell number. If you can give me his number between the meetings, I'll give him a call.
Please do. And even in his absence, because of his career, he, from the executive regular board, helps and provides assistance more than any other board member because of his expertise in the heavy soil. But yeah, I'd love to have you talk with him.
That'd be nice.
That's the conclusion of our regular business. We do have a requirement to go into executive session. If anybody has signed up to speak for non-agenda, they have it. So we have the requirement to go into executive session for real estate pending potential litigation.
Will this be counted as well?
That has been taken out. And we can talk about that. The reason for taking that, rather than taking up everybody's attention.
That's fine. I'll make sure we do that.
All right, thank you. And I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Why is your reason?
I'll make the motion to be put into executive session for real estate pending potential litigation.
A motion is our second. Second, Commissioner Cager, little discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned to go into executive session. I'd like to call in to the executive session by act of order for the Pauling County Board of Commissioners' Work Session and report that no action was taken during the executive session. This time I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Davis, for a second.
My second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.